Good evening and welcome, everyone. We appreciate that everyone is coming out. This is a public comment hearing for the renewal application for 5335, that's WR-3 for Denali Water Solutions from Crawford County. My name is Chris Ethan. I'm Attorney Supervisor with Department of Energy and Environment. I will serve as the Hearing Officer for the 19th hearing. The time is 6 o'clock, so we're going to go ahead and get started on Thursday, May 15, 2025. We are conducting this hearing at the Alamo Community Center in Alamo, Arkansas. The Division of Environmental Quality has received permit renewal application for Denali Water Solutions. The permit renewal application may be found on the Division of Environmental Quality website, www.walderpermitapplication.com. If you are unable to locate these documents on the website, may also contact the DEQ Office of Water Quality Permit Branch at DEQ headquarters at 501-682-0656. Public notice for this hearing was published on February 16, 2025. This hearing is to provide our community with an opportunity for public comments regarding the permit renewal application. Permit decision will be provided at a late date. After the DEQ considers all comments provided during the designated comment period, Department of Environmental Quality strives to develop a final decision within six weeks of close of all public comment periods. However, in cases where there is a large amount of public comments involved, or when unique technical or regulatory based comments must be evaluated, final permitting decision may take substantially longer. Tonight, I will accept formal public comments during this hearing. Verbal comments will be accepted, but in the interest of advocacy, written comments are preferred. As I announced earlier, if you want to give a public comment, an oral public comment, please pick up a comment card in the back, fill it out, your name and address on there, and we will call you up one at a time. Briefly describe what this hearing is. The purpose of this hearing is for Department of Environmental Quality to receive verbal and written comments to include in the record on this permit application and be considered during review of the permit application. What this hearing is not is an adjudicatory hearing. In other words, it is not held before a judge. It is not a trial. Witness testimony is not a component of this phase of the permitting process. A decision regarding permit applications will not be rendered tonight during this hearing. When a decision is made, it along with the written responses to comments will be provided by mail or email to each person that commented during the applicable comment period. This hearing is not a designated question and answer session. Responses to comments will not be provided during this hearing. I, as the Hearing Officer, desire to oversee the hearing and have full authority to conduct the process, manage the venue, and instruct the participants. We, I, as the Hearing Officer, and we, the Department of Environmental Quality, ask that everyone be respectful of each other and each other's time. We will have a three-minute time limit for public comments. We ask that you respect the time limitations and respect each other and the parties involved. Given the number of people we have here, if you're commenting or repetitive or redundant from a prior person's comment, we ask that you, or you may wish to yield your time and just come up and say, "I agree," or whatever order you desire, you can go ahead and give your comment. We're not trying any way to limit what anyone wants to say. Written comments are also accepted by me and by the DEQ staff tonight. Written comments should include the commenter's name, either a mailing address or an email address. All verbal comments also will be asked to provide your name and contact information on the comment card. When your name is called, you want to make a verbal comment, please step up to the podium, state your name, physical address, and organization, if any, that you are delivering comments on the app of. With that, we'll go ahead and get started with the public comments. Now, I apologize in advance because I'm sure I am going to block people's names. Niva Wagner?
Yes, sir.
Did I get that wrong?
Yes, you did.
All right, awesome. And I'll be standing right over here, and I'll kind of indicate one minute. We have one minute, okay?
I have to deal with me.
Thank you.
Hi. My husband and I live on Crosslanes Road within two miles of where Denali has over 1,000 acres already permitted to spread the wastewater that they haul. At times, they haul, they've been known to haul over 70 trucks in one day, one 24-hour period past our home. That has reduced, but it's still a lot of trucks come past our home every single day, most months over the year. We get breaks periodically. The ADQ allows them to self-report their violations, and they constantly violate the water, the precipitation rules, where they are not to land apply within 24 hours of a known forecasted rain event of a forecast of more than a half inch of rain and more than a 50% chance of that precipitation. They, this permit will add 580 additional acres within one and a half miles from us. So we know we're going to smell the stench now when it gets that close to us. Crawford County currently has eight active units with ADQ in Denali. That's the most in the entire state. Most other counties have two, one. Some have four. I believe Benton County has six. That's the closest number of permits in any county. So why is Crawford County the dumping ground for this waste product? I understand it's a necessary evil to dispose of, but it needs to be shared with more areas in the state. If that means ADQ approves other permits in other areas and gets on the ball in that, on that, I fully support that. But we need to reduce the volume in the Kibler River Bottoms and in Crawford County in general. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate your comments. Ralph Wagner? Did I say that right?
Yep. Well, I'm the other half that lives at the house. What we wanted also to bring up is the amount of traffic that's running on the road constantly creates a dust storm. We turned that into the county about the road not being maintained good enough. The dust is a hazard. The road totally gets destroyed going down into the bottoms, and the county has to replace it. Now, Denali may have funds that they are giving to that to help repair it. I don't know for sure that that's being used, but it doesn't take very much truck traffic to destroy Crosslanes Road. I looked up on the line, the American Highway Association says that every truck has equivalents of 2,520 vehicles going down that road. So if there's an average of 40 trucks a day, you can see what the damage is going through that property from the time they get off of Kibler Highway and go on and come down the crosslanes and make a turn there. That road has been repaired twice, and just recently, it's already caving back in. You can tell that it's the trucks that's destroying that road. And if there was a way that I could bring a cannon here that's got the smell that comes from that application, it would make you sick. We had the news media go down there from the Arkansas Democrat, and she put it in the newspaper about how it was an absolutely putrid smell. And now it's going to get worse by trying to add more acreage within a mile and a half from us. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Michael Gray?
Thank you. My name is Michael Gray. I own some land down in the Kibler Bottoms. I'm going to try to read this. Broke my wrong glasses today, so bear with me. I'm a landowner that has been directly impacted by the dumping of sludge on the adjacent agriculture property. In 2021, I had the opportunity to purchase a property located next to the vine tree wetlands of Ozark WMA and Arkansas River. I purchased this property in an attempt to enhance, improve, enjoy, and more importantly, preserve this portion of the Arkansas River Valley. I also felt it was possible to convert it back into a wetland. Over the next several years, I spent countless of hours, as well as a serious amount of dollars, in making it into what it is today. In 2022, I was overwhelmed by just how important the area was to migrating water fowl and shore birds. In 2024, I decided to make the financial decision to add 16-inch irrigation wells to enhance and ensure the wildlife that use this property would have what they need at the most critical time when they needed it. In early November 2024, after a large rain event, my wife and I went to the property to do some work. When we got out of the truck at our property, we were struck by the worst smell that we've ever smelled. We quickly realized that this smell was so bad that we could not push through, and we decided to leave. A week or so later, I returned to the, returned with the same results, and this time was nearly hit by a large semi tanker truck with J.D. Hunt on the side door. This is where my investigation started, and a short time later, discovered photographs, video, and documented the sludge dumping not only above our property, but also adjacent to the new Frog Bio WMA wetlands in which taxpayers are funding in the name of conservation. All drainages, runoffs eventually end on my property. The mosquitoes, bugs, and thousands of buzzards existed in biblical-like presence. Scum and pollutants were all photographed and noticed in the surrounding ditches and on my property. I spent the next several months watching and taking note of long lines of semi tanker trucks dumping sludge in and around the area, even in flooding or easily predicted flooding conditions. At the time, I did not know it was a violation for dumping during rain events, but I can assure you, they did not care. After further research, I found where the same company continues to be found for violations, and not just our state, but also its surrounding states. 21,000 from Missouri DNR, 19,000 from Arkansas, and so on. We could not use or enjoy our property until late January due to the smell of contamination, and I fear that it has been damaged forever. We did not ask for this pollutant on our property. We also spent thousands of dollars on diesel fuel and power to the well to flush the property of the scum. Now learning that ADQ found the company owing $19,000 for repeated violations has slapped in my face since I spent nearly double that amount in December and January to have the ability to flush and clean, in parentheses, my own property of this mess.
That's three minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Would you like to speak that to the written?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. Bruce Finans?
Good evening. My name is Bruce Finans. I own River City Bistro in Fort Smith, Arkansas. How this affects me and my business is a little bit different than most people. For us, I was a managing partner of another restaurant in Fort Smith in 2019. When this first became an issue, we were told at that time, the mayor, McGill, was told at that time that the ponds would be closed and the smell would go away soon. So fast forward to 2024. Out in a restaurant with a patio, perfect time of the year for the patio in 2024, and the smell rolls in. And so for us, you know, that's about 20% of our business. We stay full almost all the time, especially lunch. So when I can't seat that outside patio area, it's a problem for us. It also affects my kitchen in a way, you know, most people can go inside and get away from it. I have a 29-foot vent hood in my kitchen that pulls makeup air from the outside and it dumps this smell on top of my kitchen staff's head for hours, hours at a time. I've had employees tell me that they're sick of their stomach. It's hard to make somebody work with a great attitude in that environment. It's a really tough situation to deal with. So fast forward to this year now, and a couple Saturdays ago, you know, the smell kind of comes and goes. We sent somebody on the patio. We go to wait on them, they're gone. We really didn't know what happened. They came back in this week, and it's a regular customer. They said, "Hey, they just smelled too bad. We didn't want to stay and deal with that smell." Also, on Mother's Day this year, busiest day of the year for me. Moms, everybody out celebrating Mother's Day. That smell blows in onto my restaurant, and we had to deal with that for several hours on Mother's Day, which, you know, our patio was full on Mother's Day, and most people just dealt with it. But that's a terrible way to spend your Mother's Day afternoon is sitting on my patio with this horrible smell. That's what I have to say. Thank you.
Chris Benjamin?
My name is Chris Benjamin. I'm a resident of the city of Fort Smith. I appreciate the Arkansas Department of Environmental Quality for allowing us this hearing. I believe it is good for all sides to be heard. I would respectfully ask that the permit would not be renewed. The application of wastewater residuals in Crawford County has had an adverse effect on the surrounding area, including Fort Smith, parts of Sebastian County, and parts of Crawford County. I don't believe that the detrimental impact on the economics and the quality of life has been fully measured, and my hope is that this hearing will help to document that. The wastewater application is creating an intense noxious odor that's noticeable in and around our community, and that's repetitive. That's been said enough already. But here's the other thing I would add to that. It is not an infrequent or momentary occurrence. It happens on an increasingly frequent basis. It continues for weeks, and this impacts the quality of life on an extended basis and impacts outdoor activities in our area. Business owners in our region have been impacted. Restaurant owners with outdoor venues have had their businesses negatively impacted. The most recent experience, as was noted, was Mother's Day. Last summer, the odor was detectable in Fort Smith, and it was the talk on all of social media, and everyone wanted to know what was the source of this. In 2019, the intensity of the smell was such that it was detectable at our church building at 900 North Waldron. It had actually permeated into the interior of the building, and that smell remained for more than a few days. The intervention of city and community leaders at that time seemed to have put a temporary stop to the odor, to the open source. And I'm not sure of all of the science. I just know what I smell, and I know how it was affecting people and how it was making people sick. And I would hope that there might be some resolution for mutual benefit in all of this. And I surely want what's best for all in our region, but I believe the time has come to put some sort of limitation on these practices for the benefit of the majority who are experiencing a detrimental impact. And I respectfully ask that Arkansas Department of Environmental Quality consider this as you consider the allowance of the permit. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you for your comments. Jennifer Ryan Boaster-Bosser?
Bosser.
I'll share first. I just wanted to share a little bit about our experience. We live close to the pit, and it has tremendously affected our life. We have a 15-year-old son, and unfortunately, he has muscular dystrophy. We have spent, I've spent five days a week at therapy's for him. He does aquatic, physical, all different kinds of therapy. We decided to go with the pool at our home so I could stay home with our two other children and not be raising all of my kids at doctor's offices and therapy centers. And last summer, he didn't get to use the pool. The smell was so bad, he would come out and say, "Mom, I'm so sorry. I cannot do this. I'm going to be sick." So he would go right inside. Therapies are a very important tool for him to still maintain and be able to walk. And I just felt like it's really wrong for me to be able to utilize our pool. It's affected his health, not just the physical, but the mental, too. It's depressing, especially when you're a child that already has limitations. And really, it's just negatively affected us.
I don't really know how to start this, but I did get a call from Denali, and I'm not going to say the guy's name. I got a call from him the other day, and he ensured me that they're shutting down that pit. And this made things make a lot of people think that will work. It's not the freaking pit, like I told him. It is not the pit. It's the application. Like I told him, you're talking to a guy who was born in '81, and I was brought to the farm that I live on today. And this is the guy standing here that shoveled sides on chicken houses when he was young every stinking year. And I don't know if you've ever shoveled chicken crap out of the side of chicken houses so you can remove slabs. It's nasty. It's brutal. You hit an egg that's been there for a stinking year. It is rotten. I'm telling you right now. I am all for farming. I'm all for fertilization, but this whole thing, like I told him, I watched my parents go through so much ridicule with the ADQ growing up. They were getting shut down and putting chicken litter on their farm. My dad actually had a map from the ADQ saying we could not put chicken litter on our farm anymore. And that is out the window for Denali. I have no clue why. I don't know why they get benefits that we don't. And like I told him, it's not fair that my dad has to spread chicken litter on a tarp for somebody to come out from the ADQ and see, and they're self-reporting. Like, who are these people? Why do they get to do this? I'm driving past three loads of turkey litter right now on my farm. And guess what? It stinks. It does. This isn't chicken litter. This isn't turkey litter. This isn't, I got cow crap on my truck right now. It stinks. I drive through it. I have to go through it. This is foul, dead poultry parts. And like I was telling somebody a minute ago, I tried to think of something I could say. If you've ever had a bloated cow or some kind of animal that was bloated, and you popped it, that's the smell right there. It's decaying animal smell is what it is. It's not fertilizer. And my question for the ADQ is, why do y'all not come down on them the way you come down on us as farmers?
Thank you for your comments. Mayor George McGill?
George McGill, Mayor of the city of Fort Smith, Arkansas. First, let me commend all of you who showed up today. This smell has been a serious issue for far too long. My first day in office in 2019, the phone would ring about the smell. It was over I sit in Oklahoma. Fort Smith, on a daily basis, bore 250,000 people across our streets. And this smell, it's just unbearable on too many occasions. All the activities we have on our riverfront, tourist attractions along the Arkansas Riverfront, peacemaker festivals, the walking trails, all of that is known and void when people cannot stay for the event. We've been fortunate enough to win the Foreign Military Sales Mission for the training of F-35 pilots from around the world. And they've even commented on the smell. We're not interested in bringing people from around the world to bring their families to live and work in this area, and then they'd be here with one of the most awful smells that you could ever imagine. It's not fair to the residents of this region who choose to be here. Simply not fair. When I came into office, I did speak to Denali, and they promised me that they would close those pits down and cease the operation. And they did for an extended period of time. My understanding, they moved, started taking the product up north into Missouri. And Missouri decided to shut that down. And now they're back down here. We're asking the state to address this issue and protect this area for its residents, its businesses, and its economic development opportunities. Please help us. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Steve Holtz?
I'm Steve Holtz, Sebastian County Judge. We are a neighboring county, so I can't imagine what it's like to live next door to this wherever these pits or these spreads are going, because in Sebastian County, when this happens, the phone starts ringing, just like the mayor said. People call, "What can we do?" I don't know what the solution is, but it is definitely damaging our community, economic development. I remember a few years back, we had a Fort Smith marathon going on. People from all around, even from out of state, come to run a marathon, and they have to live through this stench. Just think about it. If they finished before they left to get out of it, they went back to those neighboring states or wherever they went and said, "Don't go to Fort Smith. Don't go to the River Valley. It smells." So it's just leaving a lasting negative impact on our community. Again, I feel terror for those of you that are close enough that you can't even escape this. But again, we're a county away, and people come out of the courthouse. Oh, no, not again. Step out of the side and smell that. So just a general comment, we need to find a solution. I'm all for economic growth. I know the industry needs to do something with their waste products, but there's got to be another solution. Spreading it on our fields and taking away the life of our community is not the answer. So please, really think about allowing these permits to continue, and I advocate that you put them out.
Thank you for your comments. Haleyon Kemp? Hillary Kemp?
Hi, I'm Hillary Kemp. I'm a resident of Fort Smith, and I'm employed by Fort Smith Coffee Co. We have three locations in the downtown of Fort Smith, one of which is pretty much outdoors. We have three, like, massive glass doors, and I've had coworkers have nausea headaches, one of which had to leave work, and it just, it affects our customers and everything. Our day is pretty much at halt because of the smell. And that's fine, thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. I'm going to butcher this name and I'll pause up in the van. Christina Katsavas?
Katsavas.
Katsavas.
Hi, my name is Christina Katsavas. I'm a city director in Fort Smith. I'm at large, and I represent the whole city. As a city director, I'm here on behalf of my constituents to oppose the renewal of the permit for Denali Water Solutions as it has direct and harmful impact on Sebastian County. These impacts are real, they're harmful, and they are entirely unacceptable. Overwhelming and persistent odors have drifted across the Arkansas River into Fort Smith, severely degrading our air quality. These odors are pungent and nauseating, especially during the fall seasons, typically a time when families enjoy outdoor activities. It was ruined for many due to the unbearable stench. One of my constituents was forced to cancel a planned family reunion picnic because the smell made it impossible to enjoy being outdoors. And this was a big reunion. They were bringing people in from California, from all over the country. These are hotel stays that aren't getting booked. These are restaurant meals that aren't getting purchased in our community. Denali's previously committed to stopping this pattern of pollution. In 2019, they assured our community that the lagoon would be permanently closed following a cleanup intended to eliminate the odor. This promise has clearly not been kept. The problem is returned with greater intensity and frequency despite Denali's assurances and despite DEQ's oversight. Furthermore, court filings allege that the lagoon contains organic waste materials, including grease, blood, and biosolids, waste not suitable for traditional wastewater systems. These substances are clearly contributing to harmful emissions, and effects are felt well beyond the permit's immediate vicinity. The degradation of air quality now extends across county lines, affecting thousands of people in both Crawford and Sebastian Counties. I respectfully urge DEQ to deny the renewal of the permit. Fort Smith should not bear the burden of another jurisdiction's waste operations. Our residents deserve clean air, safe neighborhoods, and a government that puts their health and well-being first. Denali has not demonstrated a responsible approach to their operations, and the history of complaints, legal action, and public disruption should weigh heavily against permit renewal. It is my belief that Denali should not receive a renewed permit until the lagoon is fully remediated, all odors eliminated, and enforceable long-term safeguards are placed. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. That's... Everybody, we have a comment card from which is to speak. Is there anyone that did not fill out a comment card yet that wishes to speak? Okay, if you would, get a comment card filled out so we know who you are, and we'll let you go and speak. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm in the meeting, I'll try to read that.
Anyone else that she's filled out that wants to speak that hasn't had the opportunity? Okay. Melissa DePries?
Good evening, thank you for having us. I would like to speak directly to whomever is here representing Denali, so that I may have a face. Is there anyone back here? It's with Denali, wants to show your face? No, okay. Okay, so anyway, my name is Melissa DePries, and I own South Tane Boutique. We specialize in game day, razorback, all kinds of tailgating, I'm aware. And we also specialize in clothing, so like, back to school, tax-free weekend would be a huge cash influx for us to make sales. Local game day, like, when LSU came in for a homecoming, our tailgating event? Are you kidding me? We literally have people in my store say, oh my goodness, we're from Texas, this place stinks, we will never be back. And I say, oh my gosh, please come back. Like, I promise we're only going to stink forever. But yeah, we pretty much have stunk a lot, and a lot of people know this, and we need to take care of it. So if you're responsible for everything here tonight, please kindly listen to all these concerns. I can't even imagine living next door to this situation. If you're here from Denali, why don't you go spend the night with these people and see what it's like to live with them? I mean, that's just terrible. You wouldn't live there, so why do you expect others to have to sniff your stench? We're tired of it, thank you. I need to make money and not smell horrendous odors during the fall, during football. You know, hospitality in Arkansas is supposed to be big, right? Correct? Tourism hospitality, is that a theme? Not in Fort Smith, not in the fall, you can forget it. People are not wanting to come here and spend their dollars. They are just simply not doing that. I'm actually debt-free, so whatever I spend, whatever I earn, goes right back into my business. If I don't make sales, I don't get to purchase inventory for the following, I don't know, like, Christmas holiday, which is pretty big for a boutique. So all of this, like, cancellation of homecoming, tailgating, outdoor events, it tremendously impacts businesses. It's not fair, and it's not right. And like I stated a moment ago, we're sick of this stench. So take care of it, and I don't know where you're hiding, but you can come talk to me later if you dare, if you wish. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Let's see, we have a couple people, okay. We need the... Are you okay? Can I throw it out? I don't know if she's getting on your back. And while they're finishing their cards, anyone else that is wanting to speak? We have cards for... Cindy Crawford?
Thank you. I'm Cindy Crawford, state representative, District 101, which is south Fort Smith and Chatty Crossing area. I just, I wasn't going to speak, but as I hear everyone speak. I have talked to the secretary about this during the session. I've got a few emails, but here's the deal. Why us? That's what I see. Because Missouri has shut it down, so now they've brought it to us. Fort Smith is growing. The River Valley is growing. There is no reason to stop that growth, because Missouri won't take the animal, whatever they are, that they won't take that. Why does Arkansas, let me put it this way, why western Arkansas? We are as good as the rest of the state. And I would say to our governor, Sarah, look at us. We are here. We are here with the F-16s, F-35s, we've got people moving in our community that is going to make Arkansas, it's just putting it on the map. We have great congressional support for the money that's coming in here, over a billion dollars. We can't do this. It has to be stopped. So I'm writing out to our governor, to Sarah Huckabee Sanders, and saying, Sarah, please help us.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Joey McCutcheon?
Joey McCutcheon from Fort Smith. I wasn't going to speak either, but Melissa hit a nerve with me. We've heard everyone up here tonight speak against this. Not one of the people back in the back of the room from Denali have come up here and empathized with folks like George McGill, folks like our Sebastian County judge, folks like Christina Katsavas, our state representative. We have other representatives here too, and that's wrong. So I think we can take from this that we don't need any more sludge, we don't need any more of this application in Crawford County that is now running our economic interests in Fort Smith, Arkansas. You can't go out, I've visited with virtually everyone in this room, folks who live next to this, who have a child who needs to use the swimming pool, can't even go out and use the swimming pool for health reasons because of this dumping ground, because we have become the dumping grounds. They close down, and shit flows downhill to this area. And it's more than just shit. It is a foul... We all appreciate economics, we all appreciate what has to happen. But as Cindy Crawford said, why Crawford County, Arkansas? We've had more than our, we've had more than our share here, and the foul odor is affecting us economically. There's been folks in this room who have given time, effort, and everything else to bring in the military here so that Fort Smith and the surrounding areas can prosper. And for not one representative of Denali to get up here and explain what's going to happen. We had a promise to our mayor back in 2019 that has been violated. We've got Denali, we've got SSS of Crawford County here tonight. Why don't you get up here, tell us what, why you think Crawford County needs to be the dumping grounds? And why Sebastian, Crawford, Franklin County should have to put up with this smell, this nuisance that affects economics of people like Bruce Spines, of Melissa, and various other people? So hopefully, somebody, or this application will be denied. If nobody has the courage to stand up here for this tonight, then the state and Sarah Huckabee Sanders, as Ms. Crawford said, should deny this application. She should come down here, the governor should come down here and smell this stench. Fort Smith, Crawford County, Sebastian County, Franklin County deserve more. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else? I see no more cards for written verbal comments. Just for the record, we have David Levitt and Mark Wynek, who have provided written comments. By participating in the regulatory process, each person or entity that provided comments either tonight or in writing during the comment period has established standing, should the DEQ decide to uphold or grant the permit, you establish standing to file an appeal on a final decision with the Arkansas Pollution Control and Ecology Commission. To hear you know additional comments. The time is 6:45, and we are adjourned.